I'd like to call to order Winterfield Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. We're at the Harvey Hearing Room. Roll call, please.
Counselor Tassaneri.
Here.
Counselor Costigan.
Here.
Counselor Munson. Counselor DiMarco. Counselor Ayala.
Yeah.
Counselor Swope, here. Counselor DeRoz. Vice President Belcher.
Here.
President Wittery.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge led by Counselor Munson.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With no public hearing, we have the minutes from June 18th, 2024, are circulated. Any motion to approve? Motion by Vice President Belcher. Second. Second by Counselor Tassaneri. Any discussion on the minutes, Counselor Swope?
Yeah, I think Denise, that was, the tree committee was three in favor, one against.
Right, I emailed you that. That I corrected in the mail.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Now, I was thinking, we have the swearing in of Steve, and you know, there are so many young people here, I figured maybe it'd be a good idea to have a good civics lesson and move this to the end of the meeting. You guys could.
But I think we'll continue as scheduled, and I'm gonna ask Chief Goodwin to say a
few things, but it gives me great pleasure to chair this meeting and to be able to be here to see Steven Rogers getting sworn in as our new deputy chief. Steve has been an incredible asset to the town for so many years in his day-to-day duties, but you know, what I look at the most is all he's done for the youth of this town, especially with the Explorer Program. His Friday nights out down the gym with the kids in this town, he's done so much as a coach for hockey and baseball and other youth sports, and he's just what all is good about Winterfield is personified with Steven Rogers. So I want to congratulate him, but I want to give Chief Goodwin an opportunity to say a few words.
It's very hard to follow you, Mr. President, because you steal all my thunder here, but yeah, we're giving up one guy that bleeds Winterfield blue, the guy behind me, the big tall guy, or another guy who bleeds Winterfield blue. In my career, I've never seen anybody more committed, more dedicated. Looking forward to it. We're gonna take a great department to make it greater.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to ask Denise Quist to swear in our new deputy chief.
Gladly.
I, Steven Rogers, do solemnly swear that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will support the Constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States, that I will obey the lawful orders of all my superior offices, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent on me as deputy chief of police for the town of Winterfield, according to the best of my abilities and understanding, agreeably to the laws and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth of the United States. So help me God.
Once you sign that, you're done. Yeah, you can't get out of it. Deputy Chief.
Congratulations.
We're just gonna call Kim up to thank Steve for the two minutes. They're very high.
Don't stab him.
It'll be an accident.
Staring audience.
If you'd like.
For you, because you're in the spotlight right now. Me and Max are chilling in the shade. You ready for tomorrow?
Move on.
Horrible.
Is that, I don't even, I think I just made it worse.
If it's tomorrow morning, yes, if it's two days, so it used to be on July 4th. It's now always on the 4th.
Don't hesitate to ask if you need something. I'll try, as best I can for you. This was easy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the same.
Next on the agenda, we also have general information. We're fortunate enough to have Kim Dimes, Chairperson of Conservation, here. I talked to Kim earlier this week, and we have Chris Mancini, I believe, the Executive Director for Save the Harbor, Save the Bay, on Zoom with us, and hopefully Kim will introduce him, introduce Chris, and Chris is gonna talk a little bit about the climate workshop, which will be held next Tuesday night at 6:00 at the E.B. Newton. I want to hand it over to Kim.
Thank you, President Wittery. Kim Dimes, with the Conservation Commission. Like Jim said, Chris Mancini is here, he's Executive Director of Save the Harbor, Save the Bay. Originally, I didn't expect him to go on Zoom, so I just would like to introduce him. Denise, do you see him on Zoom, Chris Mancini?
I have, I have two.
I'm here.
Right here, there he is.
Chris, hi, Chris. Thank you for being here, and it's all you.
Hi, all, this is Chris Mancini. Sorry, can't unmute my video, but if you wanna unmute my video for me, that's totally fine with me. I'm the Executive Director of Save the Harbor, Save the Bay, and we met Kim and the Conservation Commission a little earlier last week, and just wanted to say hi and say in person, well, as close to in person as I can get today, anyway. That next Tuesday at the E.B. Newton Building, we are hosting a climate workshop as part of our work with the Metropolitan Beaches Commission, which we manage for the state legislature. We've helped these in Boston and Southie and Land and a couple of the other communities, the metropolitan region, and we're trying to come to every town and neighborhood, you know, region, to really just hear from folks, you know, the experience folks are having with effects of sea level rise, or climate, or flooding, or anything like that. Our goal is to try to make recommendations to the state when it comes to the preservation of the recreational beaches. We've spent so much time and money over the last 40 years cleaning up these harbor and beaches and programming them as we look at these new changes that we're all facing, through waiting for their access to those recreational resources while still protecting our towns and neighborhoods and the built infrastructure. So I hope folks will join us, 6:00 p.m. next Tuesday in the E.B. Newton Building. We'll have food, we'll have dinner, and we will be following up with some Zoom-based hearings after that as well, if you can't make it in person. And if you can't make it and you still wanna chat with us, reach out to me anytime. And yeah, thanks to the city council for letting me speak very briefly here, and really, I'm open to any questions, but I know you guys all have your meeting.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Do any quick questions for Chris?
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you again, Chris. We look forward to seeing you next Tuesday night, July 9th, 6:00 p.m. at E.B. Newton. Again, that's the Town of Winterfield's Climate Workshop, and we look forward to it. Thank you again, Chris. All right. Public hearings, we have none, public comment, first round. Correspondence, Denise.
Hi, Carol Ficella. I would like the town council to consider a no vote on the MBTA 3A. We got an email from Gus Martucci about an incident at our 6/18/24 town council meeting, a becoming of a town councilor, and that's all I received.
All right. Committee reports, appointments commissioned and committees have not had the opportunity to meet as of yet. There was a joint meeting, I believe, with the Governmental Strategies and Finance Committee. Who was, like to make a report, Vice President Belcher?
Thank you. I chaired that meeting, it was last week, I believe. It was a really productive meeting. We went over a lot of questions about the MWRA mitigation. Counselor Swope did a lot of research on their current operations, the number of cars, the number of trucks, what goes on there on a day-to-day basis. Basically, what the joint committee is looking to do is determine how much their activity is ramped up, compare that with what our mitigation has been in the past. We're also looking at comparing inflation rates and see how that matches up, just to make sure we're getting as much as we should be from them. The committee is meeting again on the 12th at noon. We'll make sure it's on Zoom, because that is a tough time of the day for a lot of people to start going over some Massport things. We're in the early stages of defining our questions, getting them answered before we can engage with people that can really help us move forward with the mitigation.
Thank you. School Department report, we have none since our last meeting. I would like to, if at all possible, I know there's some time commitments here, if we can, take the old business, the tree removal of 170 Grover's Ave, out of order, if that's okay with the council. Is there a motion to accept that? Motion by Vice President Belcher. Second by Counselor Munson, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it. So we're gonna put back on the table, which was brought up at our last meeting on a request for a removal of a tree at 170 Grover's Ave. I know there was some information requested by the town council, some were submitted. I have the tree warden here, and I have the resident also here, if you'd like to speak first, Paul.
I really don't have anything to say, but it didn't say last week. The tree is in decline, it's not in good health, a good part of it came out the year before, the tree was girdling, the tree is not gonna be here that much longer, I don't know much longer. There is a certified harvest report on that tree also, that goes into a lot more detail than I did, and says pretty much what I said, only in more detail, and suggests it should be reported, period.
And we get right down, just let me have the resident speak, and then we're, Ms. O'Leary, yes. Please.
Do all of you have copies, because I have hard copies of the materials? We had sent a letter from my wife and myself, which, I'm gonna give the signed one to, a letter from us, so it was requested two weeks ago from the council that we do a couple of things, that we first write out a letter that would specify exactly what we would do in the case that you guys would approve. We did mail that, does, do all of you have that? Because we mailed a letter, emailed a letter, also we mailed an estimate, and also the arboretum valuation. Yes, you all have that? Okay. So I just want to make clear that, you know, if it was the case that the council would approve this, we would do the following. We would cover the cost of tree removal, estimated at $800, by Iron Tree Services, the estimate attached. We would pay in full within one week of the council's decision for the plantings of four new trees within the town boundaries, provided, of course, that we ask that two of those trees be planted, one in front of our house, and one in front of our neighbors at 185. We just want to, you know, we want to keep the green cover on our street as well, and I think that's fair enough to ask. So the other thing that you had asked for was a certified tree report. We were able to contact John Delrosa, he is the head arborist at the Arnold Arboretum, if you folks are familiar. He is certified with the International Society of Arboriculture, certified with the Massachusetts Arborists Association, certified tree risk assessment qualification. He had, as you see in your report, he had noted a series of wounds, a series of problems with the tree. His discussion and his conclusion is what I would like to highlight. His discussion, quote, "Based on my observations of a mature tree with very low vigor, growing in a location with a very limited root zone, signs of rotting and girdling roots, decay present in the main stem and several of its branches, and large scaffolded branches with what is known to be a weak branch union. This tree possesses many traits that deem it to be a potentially hazardous tree. Were this to fall, the likelihood of impact of a target is high. The tree grows along a two-lane road, parked cars are a common occurrence below the tree, the sidewalk is right below it, and the tree's height makes it capable of striking nearby houses." His conclusion, quote, "Due to this tree's condition with its many physical defects, in a site with constant targets, I would consider this tree to be hazardous and recommend its removal to avoid any potential consequences due to its failure." I also want to note that he, according to his certification, he was going by a standard. The standard is a Level 2 inspection by the International Society of Arboriculture. He did not evaluate this for us, with us asking, can we remove this to get a driveway? He told us very clearly, I'm gonna evaluate it on its health, and if it's hazardous, then that's a different story. He came out, he looked at it, and he deemed that the type of standard that he would need to employ would be a hazardous inspection. I also want to note that we, there was a comment made at the last meeting that you bought the house five years ago, you knew it didn't have a driveway, why would you expect us to approve a driveway? We bought a house with a 70-year-old bathroom, 50-year-old kitchen, some of the piping, some of the gas fixtures, at least 50 years old. We replaced all of those. It would have been within our right also to ask that a very healthy tree be removed, but I want to make sure it's clear, we didn't even think about putting the driveway in until the tree, the other tree in front of our house, of the same vintage, which he notes in his report, fell and revealed rot and decay. Similarly, the tree 30 feet away exhibited the same symptoms, and we saw an opportunity to remove that tree, plant some new ones, get a driveway. And I would argue that if that, if the council would say no today, and the tree fell in a month, we would, of course, plant another tree. But different people, you know homeowners are under no obligation to plant it, to replant. We are wanting to strike a balance here between what we would need in a driveway to reduce our needing to park on the road, to reduce congestion on the road for the benefit of the town, and then, in place of the tree, plant four for the benefit of the environment. So we're really trying to strike a balance between those three, ourselves, the town, and the environment, and we feel that this is a fair compromise.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Counselor Tassaneri had a question earlier.
I did, I just, less of a question, more of just a few comments. This is the first I've heard, I saw, of the arborist report, maybe it came in email and I missed it, so I apologize, but thank you for highlighting, you highlighted the necessary sections, so. I mean, according to the town's ordinance, thank you, according to the town ordinance, we don't remove trees that aren't dead unless they're hazardous, right? So this is probably gonna change my opinion for tonight's vote, but I would like, just to make a note, that I don't think the council should be doing business based on who can and cannot afford to buy their way out of an ordinance in terms of making a donation or paying for the removal of a tree, although I know, I believe that you and Mrs. O'Leary made that in good faith.
Yeah, exactly.
Not just because you want to get a driveway, but because you also believe in having more green coverage on your street, which is excellent, I'd love to see more trees on Grovers. But I really don't think that's a.
We also understood that plantings do cost money with the town, correct?
Correct. I just don't think that it's a fair way to govern when folks are using that as leverage to get out of an ordinance. However, this report from the arborist is pretty clear. I would ask, though, that you separate your donation, whatever you want to donate, from the removal of this tree. If you'd like to donate trees, please, it should be separate from, these two things should not be together. That's not appropriate, but thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Munson.
Thank you, Council President. I would love to see this process be a little more of a kind of a full hearing as opposed to just a couple of comments by a couple of constituents. Last meeting, I felt bad for one of the past tree wardens to not be able to have his say be heard during the process, and then we did not get a complete picture of the situation. This information was shared late, it is pretty convincing that this would be a possible hazardous tree now and in the future, so it does make the vote much easier. But going forward, I may, if I'm in this position to, I would suspend, I would ask to suspend the rules of the council format and have more of a hearing style, if that's possible.
Noted. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ayala.
I just have a question about the law, and maybe the tree warden could answer it or not. I'm looking at the state regulations, and the state regulations seem to be very protective of public trees, and they envision public trees being taken down in one of two circumstances, in immediate danger, in which case the tree warden is fully entitled to take a tree down, which is not the case here. I mean, you guys have been talking about this tree for months, and it hasn't moved. Or a tree in decline, as described by the arborist, in which case, the way I read the law, that the tree should be posted, and there should be a public hearing consistent with what Counselor Munson said. Am I interpreting the law correctly?
Yes, that's exactly what happened here.
Okay. And did we post that?
Yes.
And when was?
We posted it, I'm sorry, on this tree? Yes, it was posted.
And when was the public hearing?
Couple of months ago.
And was that done in coordination with the tree committee?
Yes.
Okay. And so people had a chance to comment and all that?
Yes, no one showed up, for me.
Okay. And the neighbors were given notice as required and all that?
I believe so.
Yeah, there was actually a public notice put onto the tree that was nailed. I'm not sure who.
Yeah, that's what typically is done.
It was nailed.
Counselor Swope.
The driveway. You have a driveway, you have a shared driveway.
We do not.
With easement, and it goes into the back of your house.
It does not.
Well, it says here.
The easement, if you want to look at it, the easement provides us access to our backyard, but we do not have room for a garage in our backyard.
No, it's not a garage. You have a driveway.
We do not have.
You share a driveway with your neighbor because you have an easement for it.
We have, if you read the easement specifically.
I am.
The driveway allows us access, we can drive along part of that driveway to access our backyard.
That's correct.
We do not have any right to park there, we do not have any right.
Not in the driveway, but in the back of your house, right? That goes to the back of your house?
So are you asking us to put a garage?
No, I'm not asking you to do anything. I'm just saying that you have a way to access the back of your house, which has a place to park your car.
There has been a fence closing in that yard for decades.
And, okay.
And the room that is allowed there, I don't think it would even allow for a garage. So the easement, the easement allows us access to drive, for instance, if we had an emergency vehicle, if we had a landscaper coming in and he needed to drive and park there to offload materials, he could do that, and he would have to back back out, and we cannot park there, we can access, that is it.
And the reason that the building commissioner denied you what you asked for, they denied that, right?
No, they did not deny that. What you're looking at is, they had denied us the, they had denied us it because the existing place, our boundary with our neighbor is our shared driveway, and so we needed to get a variance to allow us to build our driveway and extend out our porch closer to that. And with that variance being granted within common between us and our neighbor, our neighbor said absolutely, wrote in support, said fine, and they granted that.
Who granted it?
The Board of Appeals.
If the building department rejects.
The building department rejected, right.
The building department rejected it because, as of the current law, the variance is 10 feet in that neighborhood, the variance when things were built were five feet. So if anybody wants to build anything closer, anything moving an inch out beyond toward their border.
Okay.
They have to appeal, and so we had to appeal for a variance. The building department said it's an automatic, they said, we, our hands are tied, you have to go to the Board of Appeals, and we did.
Counselor Ayala.
Just a point of clarification, so, because I got confused, because you introduced the notion of a garage, which I hadn't heard before, but for the purposes of using that easement to go through and get into your backyard, that's a possibility for you.
Well, if we're talking about trees, there's a tree right in the way.
And there's no way to get into the backyard.
There are, if you go up that, our yard adjacent to that part of the driveway that we could access, two trees, two very large trees.
Any other questions? All right, thank, thank you for your comments, and this is upon us now, so we will take a roll call vote. Can you rephrase the question so that we have a clearer view? Yes, no? A yes vote is going to allow the removal of the tree, a no vote will not allow the removal of the tree. Now, this came before us from, this isn't, you know, if the tree warden had said yes, if there was, which the tree warden did, and if there were no letters submitted, it would not come before the council. Comes before the council, to me, in kind of a weird way, but, which potentially could have a lot of these coming to the council. So the tree committee, along with the tree warden, held a public hearing. There was a dissent letter sent, as long as there's one dissent letter, it will come to the council. It is now before us, it came before us at the last meeting. We requested some information, the information came back, we've had an opportunity to discuss with the homeowner, as well as the tree warden, and now we will be voting whether to go along with the tree warden's recommendation, which would be to remove the tree. So a yes vote would be to remove the tree, a no vote would be not to remove the tree. Any other questions?
I just, I didn't, just one more question, just because you raised it. Does this mean that you are agreeing to, to put in four more trees?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
And take this one down?
Correct.
Yeah, if this one comes down, yeah.
Is that part of this motion?
Well.
It is. Well, it's not part of the motion.
In accordance with what is being done, yes. He will remove the tree at a cost of, he said 800, whatever that cost would be, and he would plant four additional. be, and he would plant four additional trees, one in front of his house, one in front of his neighbors, and two with the town's discretion.
That was my understanding, that we needed to specify that we would incur the cost of the removal and spell that out at the last meeting.
Just a real question, how, how big is that, how big around is that tree? Do you know, about?
I think he specified, he said, quote, "Though the tree appears to be mature with a diameter at breast height of 20 inches, the height of the tree seemed unusually short, peaking at approximately 30 to 35."
I was just thinking about the diameter, so the-
Yeah, 20 inches.
20.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we don't have four little spindly trees.
We're not, we're not going to have four 20-inch diameter trees.
Oh, no.
Is it caliper, the trees you're proposing?
Whatever the town recommends. I understand that, well, this is an invasive species, we were told by him, that, that this one is no longer planted, so we were looking to plant a red maple. You, you probably have more, the tree warden probably has more information about what would be available at this time to be planted, but we were hoping, uh, last we checked, red maples were available.
So these two tree, well, the two trees would be planted, one in front of your house, one in front of your neighbors, the town's discretion on the other two trees. That cost of, uh, receiving and planting those trees would be on the burden of the homeowner, as well as the cost of the removal of the current tree.
Yeah, and, and I wanted to know, it, it wasn't anything of keeping, you know, of anything of leverage. What, what it was is that we were told that there's, um, there's a formula that if you take a healthy tree and you plant younger trees, there's going to be a gap in time between the ability of the younger trees to capture, and, and so that you need to do multiple trees. That's why we were offering-
I, I understand that issue. The, the issue that I have with the, it, it, it's basically equating to allowing you to buy your way out of the ordinance, which is, I don't, I don't, I-
Can I ask a question about that remark?
I don't agree with that.
Sure, sure, sure. Wait a minute. Did you have a question? Did you have a hand? Okay, Councila Yello.
You were advised about something that needs to be clarified, because there is no such thing in state law of a trade-off between a healthy street tree in exchange for other trees. The law is very clear. A healthy street tree is protected, okay? It is only in the case of an imminent disaster, which we didn't have here, or a dying tree if posted in a public hearing under those circumstances. So whoever's advising you to say, "I can take one tree down and build four, five, or six other trees," it's not allowable, if it's a healthy tree.
It, it's an environment, I, I wasn't saying to take a healthy tree down. I was saying-
You did say a healthy tree.
Well, no, I, I-
You may not have meant it, but-
That, that I may not have meant it. No, I did not mean that. When, when our tree originally fell, the other one, we were asked, you know, I asked, "What do we need to do to replace this tree?" And they said, "Well, do you want to replace that tree, or do you want to replace its capacity?" And I didn't understand the concepts, and then they explained it.
Understood. Okay. I just wanted to clarify a statement you made. I didn't want the rest of the world to think-
I appreciate that.
Every public tree is up for grabs here, right? They don't have the limited circumstances according to the law.
All right, so before we vote, going back to a comment Council Tascinari made, I, I will ask the council, if you want to do this in two separate motions. The first motion would be the removal of the tree, the second motion would be, um, to accept the donation of the cost of removing the tree along with four additional trees, if you would like to split it up like that. It's totally up to the council. All right, so the first vote is going to be, yes vote would remove the tree, second vote would not, a, a no vote would not remove the tree. We will have a roll call vote, please.
Council Tascinari?
Yes.
Council Costigan?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Councila Yello?
Yes.
Council Swob?
No.
Council DeRoz, Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President LaTerry?
Yes. Motion is passed. Second motion is that, um, the town of Winthrop accepts the donation from the O'Learys for, which would include the purchase and planting of four new trees, one of which would be in front of 170 Grovers, the other one would be in front of-
185.
185 Grovers, and two others would be at the town's, um, at the discretion of the town. Also, we would accept the donation of the cost to remove the current tree in front of 170 Grovers. There's a second on that. Vice President Belcher, any discussion on that? Council Costigan?
I- Just, just one comment regarding the planting of the four trees, uh, the caring of those trees. There's some discussion that they can be very sensitive when they're planted. As far as the upkeep and the overall condition of those trees, um, who will be responsible for that, uh, that mission to make sure they're, they're kept alive? And what happens if one of them dies? Or two of them, maybe all four? We're back to, we're back to this room again. So, just a question, if that could be answered.
Council President? I actually spoke to, I spoke to Director Callow, I wrote this in the past. Whenever someone makes a donation for a new tree, they're, they cover the upfront cost of the tree plus three years' maintenance, which is done with the, the bags.
The water bags.
The water bags. So it's supposed to cover them up to the first three years, which is how long it takes to basically seed the tree.
And we get that in writing? Is that correct?
That's just the way, that's just the way, no, that's just the way.
Okay.
I don't, that's the way it was explained to me. I'm not claiming to be an obiteries.
Councila Swob.
I want to make sure the tree lives, because we've planted a lot of trees that have had bags on them and died. And so the question is, I don't know if they were not planted correctly, or we are just with rip and trees die here, I don't know. But whatever, if it dies, is the question I think that you were asking. So I think the question is, can we make sure that they are replaced? Not that they are not bagged or whatever planted, but for three years, if that, one of those trees die, they are replaced.
I would, uh, well, again, I, I don't, I personally wouldn't have a, an issue with that on the two trees planted there. If the town decides to plant trees and a, and it ends up being in a neighborhood that it doesn't grow, that's not the responsibility of Mr. O'Leary.
Or trees.
I understand that.
I want to make sure they live.
I understand that, but it's not the homeowner's responsibility to take care of a tree that was planted by the town in a, in a, in a specific location. Vice President Belcher?
Thank you. I just want to say, no pun intended, but I think we're getting into the weeds in, on this.
And the trees.
Yeah, and the trees. So I just want to caution us not to overstep on the purview of the DPW director, the tree warden, the town manager. Some of this is worth discussing and, and thinking about while we make a vote, but some of it is outside of our scope, so I just want to tread carefully.
Councila Yello?
Maybe to the, the tree warden. I understand including the bag with the tree is a good practice, but my understanding is that we, the town, struggle to have the bags refilled with water on a regular and required basis. Is that not true?
Correct.
Is there an outsourced, uh, again, to the tree warden, outsourced enterprise that could be, um, fill those bags with water for three years? That could be part of this arrangement?
I suppose you could do anything as long as you want to pay for it.
I mean, that's, that's my worry. It's cheaper than replanting a tree two years later, right?
You, you appreciate it to the council, I, I-
No, no, I know, I know.
So I, I, I appreciate that, and I've been trying to get a water truck for a few years.
Got that.
And I've, I've been successful. I did go for a grid and included that in the grid.
Or a water truck, yes.
Yeah, that would allow a refund. For a water truck. Put a piece of flat, these are the water grids, and they put it on the ground.
Vice President Belcher?
Thank you, just a quick comment. I think this is something that potentially a combination of the tree committee and the new climate committee can work on. I think there's a lot of potential solutions here. We can have people adopt a tree, and then they're responsible for the water. We can try and get rain barrels to people, you know what I mean? We know the price of water is, people don't love it. So I think trying to help people have an easy way to, to help keep these trees alive, but I think this is outside the scope of this conversation.
Right, Councilman Munson?
In the history of, of donations, have we ever said no to a donation of trees? And the, the reason why I say that is because, to Max's point, I would really hate to think that we would make a decision based on whether he could afford to buy his way out of this decision. The decision's been made, the tree is coming down because it's hazardous, and that was a certified opinion. But as far as donations go, well, of course you would, I mean, it seems to me like we have never said no to a donation, and I don't see why this would ever be a precedent to make Tascinari's comment more real. I don't think that we are letting anyone buy their way into, out of an ordinance. I think that this is just a, a donation we're willing to accept. That's my-
We have a discussion. Seeing then, roll call, please.
Council Tascinari?
abstain.
Council Costigan?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Councila Yello?
Yes.
Council Swob?
Yes.
Council DeRoz? Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President LaTerry?
Yes. Motion is passed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Back to town manager's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Council President. I just wanted to update the council on a few things. I will be ready, um, for the water rate presentation at the next meeting on the 16th, so I'd like to ask to have that on the agenda, just give an update on where we stand, and do the PowerPoint presentation again and update where we stand with the water rates and where we're going. We did, based on the council's vote, we submitted the approved floodplain ordinance to the, um, DCR and the FEMA, so, um, that was done by DCR on behalf, so we're all set there, so thank you for that. Um, the, we had the nice swearing-in ceremony tonight. We will hold, um, Police Chief Goodwin's swearing-in, uh, on 7/16 as, uh, our exiting. Police Chief Terry Delahanty's last day will be on 7/14, so we'll hold it on 7/16 for, uh, Chief Goodwin. Eurobeach cleanup, as promised, we did get out there with the DPW and did some cleanup on the beach, and I also want to thank all the residents that got together at nighttime to kind of work off of that, and I continued cleaning up the beach, so thank you to all of them publicly, for, I appreciate that. I am finalizing, I know the council wanted the fire station documents, I'm finalizing putting those together, and also looking at the basketball court, as was recommended. We're taking a look at the, um, the depth of the lot, uh, making sure that we can, you know, the building that, the standard fire station we proposed is about 90 feet, so with a 100-foot apron, we're looking at 190 feet, so we want to make sure we can make it with the depth of the lot, and how tall that retaining wall would be, et cetera, et cetera. So we're still doing a little more homework on that. The next 3A meeting is on our next, same night as our next council meeting, on 7/16 at the Senior Center. We did meet with a vendor to look at putting Zoom in there, we have not got the price back yet, but that meeting will be taped and obviously broadcast live on WCAT, so it could be watched afterwards. Um, and then lastly, I got some information on the, and Council President has mentioned it before, but the holiday week, we have the, um, Holiday Overflow Collection, um, on Independence Day. Uh, no collection on, obviously on Independence Day, but all trash and recycling after the Fourth will be delayed one day, but you also get the, um, get one, uh, extra barrel after the Fourth of July, so that's a couple of times a year you get that, and this is the, one of those holidays we get that, so I wanted to remind all the residents of that as well, with the appropriate lid on the barrel and not overflowing.
Couple of items, and I'll open it up with some questions, um, on 3A, which, you know, it's always in the news, it's always out there, and I know we've had, um, some really good citizens do a lot of information digging, and they've come to me, and I'm sure to others with some pertinent information about, you know, crossing every T and dotting every I on any possibilities of any opportunities we might have to, um, to get out of it, for lack of a better word. And I, I just want to know if you've taken advantage of any of those opportunities and where we stand.
I did, with regard, I think what you're talking about with regard to, you know, the, um, a couple of, I don't know, probably, I don't know how many years ago now, but, uh, there was a 40B application, a couple of residents, um, got together and did an analysis on what they thought, based on the list that they compiled, that we were, you know, this certain criteria in 40B, um, this is outside of 3A, but the 40B compliance, that, you know, based on density, like population of multifamily housing, we were at a certain percentage, and the requirement was only, I think, one and a half or something like that percentage of the housing stock. Uh, they felt that we were out of it because of that. That list was never certified, and that list was never, you know, sent up to the, at the time, it was DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, that has since been renamed to the Executive Office of Living Communities, um, so, which is, you know, Secretary Augustus and his team. I have reached out, I talked to Chris Cluckman, um, in Secretary Augustus's office about that, and she was putting me in touch with, uh, the person who handles 40B, so I was going to forward that memo up to them, let them take a look at it and see if there's any accuracy, but I think what's going to happen is, well, they'll push back on us to look at, you know, our current SHI listing, which is subsidized housing inventory for the town, and then look at, you know, potentially what we have for, you know, the, um, Winthrop Housing Authority, et cetera, et cetera, so we want to take a look at all of that, but still in process, but we haven't got any final, you know, finalized that with them yet.
Okay, and before I open up one more thing, um, tunnels, just to let everybody know, again, some of the tunnel closes Friday until August 5th.
Yes.
I guess the good news, if any, is the Blue Line will be free to our residents, the ferry will be reduced fare, I think $2.40.
Yep.
So that will be from, uh, July 5th to August 5th.
Correct.
Uh, after that, there still will be some weekend closures, and that's to be determined, but, um, so everybody prepare for that. And I'm going to say this under public relations, but I'll say it now because we might have a bigger audience, and, uh, with July 4th coming, the Horables Parade, um, is Thursday morning at 9:00 AM, starts from the Landing, just an incredible Winthrop event that's been going on for so many years, it's, uh, a, a long time, a long passport, all of our lifetimes, but, um, any volunteers who wish to help in any way, shape, or form could, uh, could go down to the Landing at 8:30. The parade will start sharply at 9:00 and head down towards Coughlin Park with some events at Coughlin's Park. But again, uh, it's a great event, I encourage people to get down there to, to take a look at it, and, and obviously the fireworks will be Thursday night. And with that, uh, Councila Swob had some question?
Hi.
Hi.
A couple of things. It's going to start, I'm going to start with trees. The first thing is, the reason I voted no on that tree is that tree's been girdled. And I've, so I've been reading about trees being girdled, and I know that it could happen, um, maybe from disease or something else, but it can also happen because of, of a human, of, of something we did on trees. And I don't know how many other trees are at risk like that, but, and I don't know what the tree warden has left, but I don't know what we can do about that, but that's a serious problem. Because being girdled, from what I read, is often done because of, of human hands, so I don't know if you can poison a tree because you don't want it, or whatever, but that's a concern. I did take pictures of three other trees that were cut down, and I understand that, um, I think what you mentioned to me, or somebody mentioned to me, is that the trees were hollow. So I read up on hollow trees, there's lots of hollow trees, they can last for 20 to 30 years. So cutting down a tree just because it's hollow doesn't, to me, from what I've read, unless you can tell me differently, make a lot of sense. One on Pauline Street, two on Court Street. I, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, um, you know, what I see, and, I mean, it doesn't look hollow to me.
It doesn't necessarily have to be hollow at the stump, but yeah.
It's not hollow. There's another one that's not hollow at all, but they can, it's not hollow on, on Pauline. And I talked to the woman that's right across the street from that tree, she said she never even saw a branch down on that tree. So, I mean, that's a lot of trees in a week. And then I looked at Pathfinder, is it Pathfinder?
Yes.
Yeah. We pay them a ton of money, but a lot of trees they've cut down in the last three years, a lot, not just a small amount. And the cost is sometimes, you know, three thousand, twenty thousand, I mean, it's a lot. And I'm not sure why the twenty thousand, frankly, because I did, when I looked at all of the, all, all of the quotes here, it doesn't actually tell you exactly what they did for twenty thousand dollars. But I, I'm not sure. I mean, are the trees we're planting making up for all the trees we're losing? And are they growing? Because I don't know, I, I don't see them. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong place.
As far as planting, I mean, since I've been here, we planted fifty trees, you know, last spring and then this past fall. And then obviously, what the Winterploves Trees Foundation planted as well with the donation. So I mean, you know, that's probably a total of.
Is that separate, by the way?
That's separate of, the Winterploves, yeah, they got a donation from the foundation, and they planted their own trees up at the Landing and around town and whatnot.
Okay, because they mentioned that to me. I think it was about thirty trees that they planted.
Yeah. And we got another twenty-five that'll be planted in the fall.
And where are they?
They will be ordered in the fall once we get them.
But are they, are they trying to?
They're working with the Tree Committee.
And are those the trees that are going to be planted along Revere Street or?
Yeah, they're trying to populate the main streets now. The Tree Committee can, you know, certainly give an update, but they're trying to focus on the main drags right now. And we planted a whole bunch on Washington just this past spring. You can go down there and see them.
Is there an arborist that determines whether these trees should be cut down?
There's an arborist that the company has on staff that's going to, as I sent you in that email, they're going to send us a report on the trees.
They haven't sent you that, right?
No, but they hire an arborist as part of their staff.
But they cut down, they've cut down the trees, and we don't have to re. So what is the process here? So it looks to me like a healthy tree, yet the tree warden is not an arborist. The arborist, I thought, decided on whether we should cut down the trees, because they shouldn't be cut down unless they're diseased. And what, where are we?
They prune, they, we bring that company to prune the power lines. So they prune the trees for the power lines. If they see a tree that they feel like it could be a threat to the public safety, and they'll call up the tree warden, and they'll take a look at it along with their arborist, and they, they make the call. So they've done that up.
I would really, if you don't mind, if you could give me, or the council, those reports, because these are three trees that, I don't know, I'd like to see, because I know you're.
Once I get the reports, I'll hand them on to you.
Okay, and if they are, don't show, aside from the tree being hollow, but they don't show it's diseased, what can we do about it? Nothing.
It's the tree ward, yeah, I mean, I, you know.
Tree is gone.
Yeah, we trust the tree ward and, you know, judgment, so we have to, and the tree company, so that's, you know, day-to-day operations.
Right now, I have concerns.
Okay.
Council Munson?
Yes, I didn't get to hear the final number you said. You said fifty since you had been here, and the.
But we've done with the DPW, yeah.
And then the foundation donated to the Winter Loves Trees, and how much did they do?
I think they said thirty or so.
So we're around eighty, plus another twenty more?
They did a little less, because they were using private vendors to plant them, so the cost was a little.
So by the end of this year, we'll have planted a hundred since you've been here?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay, that wasn't my line of questioning. I just wanted to hear the real number, so, but that's wonderful.
Again, not, certainly, you know, smaller, you know, two to four-inch gallon.
I do applaud your investigative, your research there, Miss Counselor Swope. I'm impressed. I, I do, I do think that it's worth having Pathfinder not be able to run, you know, havoc and just be able to pick whatever trees they think that might be on the fence. It's nice to have that kind of, you know, a paper trail to show that everything is being done properly. But my line of questioning was a little bit different. It was more about three A. Carol Fisella did write a wonderful email to the Town Council, and the two questions that I really need to have answered by our own council, if you don't mind, is, is whether the condo docks supersede three A? So, or do they defer to three A? So for example, if we were to do what RKG suggested, which is to play, you know, the paper compliance with putting the zone on two or three places, including Seal Harbor, which she is, she is a resident of, would the condo docks at the Seal Harbor be null and void? Or would they still be fully intact, except that in fact, that they by right need to have a, you know, multifamily capacity? So I guess that the question is, is where do the condo docks viability wane and stay strong? And that's one thing I would like to know. There's also another one that is the density question. It seems to be that it's, I mean, from what, this is just water cooler hearsay, not like I'm not on the boots, on, on the ground. But is it true that the density of any three A zone is unlimited? So they could take a multifamily that's currently in existence, like a Seal Harbor, and instead of having it be a two-bedroom with two people in it, or four, they're now actually, because of three A, able to divvy that up and to make it a, you know, kind of an immigrant destination where you can stuff eight people in there and, you know, that kind of. I just would love to be able to hear from our council a clear and concise answer, so that way, we're coming to the decision-making table with the right info. Is that possible?
I'll look into it, I'll get back to you on it. I mean, some of those questions have already been answered, I can send you the answers, but.
Okay. All right, great. And then lastly, sorry to bother you. Do you have a relationship with, does a town have a relationship with the owners of the large multifamily high-rises like Seal Harbor, the Fort Heath on Pond Street, et cetera, et cetera?
I know the, I've met the owner of Fort Heath, but I mean, I don't have a relationship with them per se.
They're condos.
Yeah.
They're condos, right?
Yeah, they have a condo board. Fort Heath's apartments, yeah. Seal Harbor's condos, yeah.
And so I guess then the question begets, like, if we have a relationship with them, and three A is looming, what would, what changes would that bring about? And where are, what direction are they headed in if it does come to fruition? So those, just kind of get ahead of it is where I'm kind of at.
Yeah, I would suggest some of those, you know, as far as, you know, its land use and everything else, a lot of those were answered at the last meeting. I'm not sure if you watched the tape of the last meeting.
I haven't seen it fully yet.
Yeah, a lot of that stuff was answered in that, so, as well.
Okay, I'll double-check it, thank you.
Council Aiello.
So a couple of things. First of all, I know you didn't intend it, but I grew up with twelve people in six rooms. Half of us were immigrants. So let's be careful about the term immigrant housing when we're talking about small apartments and stuff like that, right?
There was no, no offense. Men, we're all immigrants here, Joe.
We are.
We are.
We just need to be careful that we're not accidentally disparaging people.
Absolutely not.
I want to follow up on Council Swope's topic about the trees. To me, the law is very clear about what needs to happen, and I talked about that earlier.
Yep.
And just given the volume of trees that she has and the tree trunks that she had asked me to go look at, and the way that this project got here willy-nilly, in sort of an odd way, I have a real concern that we're violating state law, okay? We're not doing proper documentation. The notion that we have an arborist who, if he says yes, his company gets paid money to take the tree down, is an inherent conflict of interest, and we shouldn't be doing that, right? If, if I'm an arborist on, working for a company, and I can get ten percent more trees cut down because they're sort of on the edge, maybe, kinda, it's, it's insanity for us to rely on that kind of advice. And I, I would stop that practice immediately. An arborist ought to be completely independent of the decision and the financial rewards in terms of taking a tree down and not taking a tree down. I think we need, to follow up on Councilor Swope's issue, we don't necessarily have to go back five years, but let's go back eighteen months and figure out all the trees are cut down and see what documentation we have. Let's see what posting happened or didn't happen. Let's look at the evidence post-cutting that the tree, in fact, was as sick as we thought it was. You know, I, I look at trees all over the place after these last few tree things, and there are a lot of trees, just like human beings, that aren't perfect, right? That have a branch that's dying over here, the rest is good. Imbalanced trees, I hear, I see imbalanced trees, especially along railways all over the place. The Highway Department doesn't come around and cut them down. They don't get cut down on Commonwealth Avenue. It just seems like something different is happening here, and we're not living up to the spirit and the law. I worry, I'm not saying we do. I worry we're not living up to the spirit and the law of what the state ordinance to protect public trees does. And so we, we do need more data. We got to figure out how to do it right. We can make sure we got the right personnel, the right processes in place. We got to push a tree committee to clean up the ordinance to the extent they need to be cleaned up. But I'm worried that we're going about this a little too loosey-goosey, and we're going to get into trouble, and it's not good for us generally.
Take it on revision, thank you.
Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for installing. I saw there's a solar-powered flashing stop sign at Delby's Corner. So thank you, I've been asking for a long time for this. And just to build on that momentum, are any other improvements coming to that intersection soon? Like flex posts, perhaps?
No, I don't have anything on the agenda right now. The Director Cal is on vacation this week, so I'll find out.
I will ask again. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Swope.
I do encourage all of you to try to read Carol's memo. It's rather long, but I think it's, it's, it's very detailed, and she's spent a lot of time on it. Certainly be looking at and answering it, but I think it's important for us to take a look at. And your questions are very good, Council Munson, because I had the same. I had the same, I have the same issues, and of course, I live at Seal Harbor, but, but I have talked to, I have talked to the owners of Fort Heath. And, and there's a lot of questions about apartment buildings, for sure, and what we can and can't do under the law. So it's important. This is really critical for us. Thanks.
Thank you. And before we move on, I'll just ask one more, because it just reminded me, talking about trees, I think, coming into Winterploves, on the left, where the car wash is, there are three new telephone poles. Now, my understanding is if it's on private property, they could, and I know we're a big, you know, trying to limit the number of telephone poles we have, but can we just get some clarification as to why they're there?
I'll have to ask the, I'll pass the property on, and see if maybe Director Cal knows too. I'll find out. Yeah, I'll look into it.
All right. CDICR?
They, I don't think they've met. Yeah, they haven't met since the last time we met, so.
Okay. And policymaking committees, I do not believe, right? Old business we did. First item, second item is short-term rental discussion, and this is continued till July sixteenth, where we will vote in it just because we had to have two weeks, I believe, of newspaper advertising. So that will be on the agenda for the July sixteenth meeting. New business, I have submitted a motion that the Town Council transfer eighty thousand dollars from Capital Stabilization Fund to the Stormwater Engineering Special Article for Phase Two of the Stormwater Study for Tileston, Girdlestone, and Pico Ave areas or take any other action relative there, too. I will refer that to finance and hope that they'll be able to have a meeting before our next meeting on the sixteenth. Appointments and reappointments. This is just finishing up on the second batch for the end of the year. Town Council accept the reappointments made by Town Council President Luteri for the following committees for a three-year term or take any other action relative there, too. I'm going to take these in two sections. And the first one, so I'll, I'll do the first one first. The first one is to reappoint Chris Aiello to the Tree Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, abstentions, one. Okay, and the next. The next is Town Council accept the reappointments made by Town Council President Luteri for the following committees for a term of three years or take any other action relative there, too. Board of Registars, James Gallagher. Commission on Disabilities, Denise Quist, one year. Kathleen Kane, Jonathan Rotis. Council on Aging, Heather Martin and Mary Vitale. Parks Committee, Nicole Vacher. Scholarship Committee, Debbie Chavez. And that is it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. New appointments, Town Council accept the appointment made by Town Council President Luteri to, to appoint Jeannie Maggio and Mary Lou Cooney on the Board of Health for each, for a term to expire June thirtieth, 2027. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. And the last one, I'll pass to Vice President Belcher.
All right, there's a motion submitted by Council President Luteri, and the text of the motion is that the Town Council accept the appointment made by Town Council President Luteri to appoint Dawn Luteri on the Scholarship Committee for a term of three years or take any other action there, too.
Second.
Second by Council Aiello, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention, please.
I'll put you to do that.
No discussion?
Town Council decorum, I'm just going to, for, for my clarity, as well as the public's and everything else, we have, I encourage people to take a look, well, I encourage you to read the charter, which is quite lengthy, but it is fun and it's good reading, it's some.
Good reading.
But we also have council rules, and, and I'm just going to read a couple tonight, and these are decorum for the council as, as well as decorum for, for the public. It's, you know, these meetings sometimes get contentious, and as I'm reading these, which I haven't read in a while, I'm like, oh, I think I broke that one, I broke that one. So I'm just going to read these for the public, and it will take, you know, hopefully, three minutes of our time. So just, Council decorum, this is Rule eleven for the council rules. One, discourse at council meetings shall be marked by courtesy and respect, even in the face of disagreement. Number two, discussion shall be centered on the issues at hand, and personal attacks shall not be tolerated on individuals. Number three, all cell phones and such devices shall be silenced during council meetings. And again, decorum of council members, members of the Town Council shall conduct themselves in an orderly manner to assure that the business of the town is attended to as expeditiously and as deliberate process allows. Members will address Council President, as Mr. or Ms. President, and other colleagues as councillor. Councillors shall address requests to speak through the Council President, and shall not speak until recognized. Discussion shall be limited to the topic before the council, and extraneous issues shall have no place in the debate. Council members shall not interrupt a colleague except to raise a point of order, to express a point of personal privilege, or to question parliamentary procedure, or to doubt the presence of a quorum. And the last one, which is relatively new, council members are expected to dress, at a minimum, in business casual attire at all council meetings, including subcommittee meetings. There is also a section for decorum of the public, and this is the last one I will read tonight. Number one, citizens of the town will be invited to speak to the council during two times within the meeting designated as public comment for a maximum limit of three minutes for each public speaker. However, the president or any councillor may request an additional time for any speaker if they continue to deem it necessary. Number two, no person may address the Town Council before or after having been recognized by the Council President. Number three, all citizens addressing the council will identify themselves by name and precinct, name, address, and precinct. By a majority vote of the council, a person not residing in Winterploves may address the council during public comment. Comments from the public shall be not involved personalities, but shall be limited to the business of government issues dealing within the town of Winterploves. Council President will determine the length of public comment. Generally, the public shall not be allowed to participate in the deliberations of the council. An exception to this rule shall be at the discretion of the Council President. People addressing the council shall do so in an orderly manner, shall not make repetitious, slanderous, or irrelevant comments, nor shall they engage in disorderly contests that disrupt. And again, we'll say things during meetings like name and precinct, and we're redundant about it, and this is because this is part of the council rules that were established by the council some twenty years ago and amended as needed during the history of the council. So again, that's on the council website as well. There's a few other, you know, there's, this is section, whatever it is, section seven or eleven, or whatever it happens to be. But this is quick reading, the charter is a little longer. Council Aiello.
Thank you, Council Luteri.
Council President.
Council President Luteri.
Mr. President.
Thank you for that refresh, that's important. And the last meeting, we had a number of contentious issues. And I have to make a public apology to Jack Dowd. That's, that's fine, but I'm going to make it anyway. We ended up in, it doesn't matter, I just want to be clear, I violated my own value system. It doesn't matter what a member of the public says to me, how they say it. My responsibility is to serve the public trust, to listen, to absorb, to make judgments when asked via a vote, and do nothing else, okay? I violated that, I violated that with Mr. Dowd, and I really am sorry that I did that. And whether or not I'm forgiven or not forgiven, it's important for the public to understand, I crossed a line that I should never cross personally, and I'm very sorry for that. for that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Consuela. Um, we are going to have our second and final round of public comment. Now that I realize I could limit the time, this is gonna be, I don't know, a minute and a half? Um, no, we'll have a second round of public comment. Last.
First of all, I would like to thank you so much for moving forward with Tyleston Road and Stone Road. I have, um, been able to go off of my property for a full day with rain on the way and know that Mark Senet has the number to call to start the flushing of Girdlestone Road, and I am so thankful. Thank you very much. Second comment is, I for the first time went on the ferry. It was fabulous. I encourage everybody to go on the ferry and take a ride. It was two, it was like six dollars on trip, and it was wonderful. So that's my second comment. The third comment I would like to make quickly is thank you all for what you do. It's hard work, it's a lot of information, and what I would like to do is to help create engagement and community. So I don't want to join the community at this time, but, um, I will be out talking to neighbors and, and getting a fire station, I will ride, and hopefully, um, a community center eventually.
And I do want to publicly thank the DPW for all their hard work and keeping that water out of your yards. Thank you. Karen.
Uh, Karen Chauks, precinct two. Two issues. First of all, I did attend Senator Edwards' coffee hour, and she mentioned that there was a tour that was done prior to that, and nobody has mentioned that at all, neither the council president nor the town manager, and I'm just wondering if they have any comments on that, on that tour with, um, the Secretary Augustus. The second thing is, um, I believe the town manager mentioned last meeting or maybe meeting before, there was gonna be some sort of a questionnaire put out about the site of the fire station. Is that going forth, or is that at a standstill, or where are we? Because we're getting very close to November.
Yeah, so, and the last question, there will definitely be a question, a questionnaire going out, so that we want to follow up on, we want to be as transparent as possible and get as much public information before we put a question on the ballot.
And the chief and I are looking forward to getting started with that.
Yes, and to your first, we did have a drive-through, a drive-by, not a drive-through.
What is going on over here, Mr. President?
We did have a drive-through of the town with Secretary Augustus and Representative Turkle was there, Senator Edwards was there, who coordinated a lot of this, myself, the town manager, along with Consulat de Ross, and Senator Augustus's aide, and we went through the whole town, literally. I think Senator, Secretary Augustus was quite impressed with our town. Um, you know, we made a lot of relevant points, which I think he took very seriously. Um, you know, it's a process, and, um, you know, we continue to do the work we have to do. The intent, the intention is that by the first meeting in August, we will have recommendations from the planning board as to what they're recommending to us, and then it will be up to the council to take action on that. Uh, but the secretary was, uh, extremely professional, very nice, and, and asked a lot of questions about the town, um, and it was a good experience for all of us. So, uh, we did not, you know, there was no dis, well, not that there was no discussion, we did not get any, you know, well, you're really nice people, we're gonna cut you to 100 units, there was nothing like that. We did get clarification that we have, um, basically a credit for 220 odd units, which brings our number from 882 to 662 roughly. Um, and that is solely a credit for the work we did on the CBD project. It does not in any way, shape, or form, and I specifically asked this question to the secretary, uh, if that would in any way, shape, or form put any sort of three A zoning on the CBD, and he assured us it does not, it's just a credit for the work that we did. Uh, so we were very appreciative of that. Uh, so I do think that this will be coming to a head, um, sometime in August, and I encourage you, as always, with your feedback. Thank you, Karen. Yeah, Jack.
Captain, I'm seeing three. Um, the town manager, just a quick question on the ferry. Are they reducing the rate? Are they reducing to the senior rate, to the seniors? Are they gonna get a lower rate than what it is now?
Don't believe so? Yeah, it's 240 for everybody, I think, across the board.
So the ferry's gonna remain, I'm flattered.
That was already told, 240. I didn't mention, no one mentioned anything about a senior discount.
Okay.
Yep.
I forget to send that myself, actually. Me and Jack. Yes.
Bill Schreiber, precinct five, I'm interested in that as well. Two points. Thank you, um, Counsel Swob and Counsel Aiello, recent questions about the trees. Before you raised that comment, I was mentioning, I was thinking with former council president, the very same thing, it sounded to me kind of strange that the arborist who worked for a company was recommending the company which ones should be torn down and they're getting paid to do that. So I'm glad you guys raised that. Uh, my concern is, we need trees, and we should be very careful in the ones we bring down. The other, the second question regarding the fire station, I'm glad to hear town manager also includes the basketball court, even though I love playing basketball down there, I think it might be a good site. I would recommend to you folks, after you study the issue, that you take a preliminary vote expressing your interest, and when you send out information for the survey to people, which I think is a good idea, you should tell people the positives and negatives for every site, what it's gonna cost, et cetera, because I'm always concerned with surveys, how accurate, you know, there's like a lot of polls out there for, on different things. Polling or asking surveys is very, uh, can be skewed in a lot of different ways. So I think it's important for, if you are gonna do a survey, that you give people enough information, what you folks who've studied this issue are gonna have to make the final vote on this issue, what do you think the pluses and minuses of each of the sites are, so that people have an informed, uh, decision when they do vote on the survey. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I get to you, Jack, I just wanted, 'cause Bill just made a statement, so I just want to say, um, you know, Bill has been the chairperson of, um,
Board of Health?
The Board of Health for a number of years, and along with Jeanne Hoges, and I want to thank them both for their incredible years of service, you know. Agree, disagree, whatever you do on certain decisions or whatever, um, you know, it really comes to fruition when you try to replace people as to the number or lack of number of people who just have the time, the opportunity, the desire, um, and the thick skin needed to serve on these boards and committees. It's, it's extremely hard work. None of us always agree with, with whatever anybody does, but, um, the appreciation is definitely there, so thank you for your service.
Hey, I'd just say thank you for saying that, and also thank you for recognizing Jeanne Hoges, and I, by the way, Jeanne Maggio and Mary Lou came to our last Board of Health meeting, and I think they'll be terrific.
Thank you. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are some correspondence offered from Denise. Is there a name attached to the correspondence?
Uh, yeah, it was, um, Carol Ficella and Gus Martucci.
And what did they concern?
Uh, Carol was writing, um, she would like the town council to consider voting no for an MBTA three A, and Gus Martucci wrote about the incident on 6/18 with the town council meeting.
Do you write? Does anybody write? You don't have to put that?
No.
Is it available?
Just a summary of it.
Thank you. All right. Mr. President.
Yes.
At the last meeting, I stood up for public comment. You know, I've, I've done a lot of research concerning the wall, studying, you know, at the line media. It's a 20, 2500 linear field. And I've done some research to start a bill to fix that wall. Mr. Aiello at the last meeting said, we're gonna take it up in the spring. So my idea is to take it up right now. It can be done by any type of, uh, public entity or any personal, uh, any person that wants to take it up can write the bill, and we're in the process of doing that right now, just to get it started. Like I said before, the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, everybody wants a civil hall in this country because of the rising tides. I was going to take this bill and offer it to, um, Mr. De Ross, because his committee is, is looking into, uh, the rising of the tides. I, I think that's the reason why we started a new committee. As far as my comments last week, and you've done this before, I would say, I would make a comment, and then you say, well, I'd just like to clarify Jack's comment, but that's not right. You know it's not, you just read the rules. You're not supposed to do that. In other words, Mr. Aiello had the opportunity to tell me that I was talking nonsense, that he mentioned it nonsense three times, that my ideas were nonsense. That's why this situation happened. You were out of order, letting Mr. Aiello contradict my opinion. If I have a comment and someone wants to take it up, that I was right or wrong about the comment, you put it on the agenda for the next week. If it's important, if I say something out of line, if I have a comment that you don't agree with, if it's a little bit altered from what you're all thinking about, you don't give a, a, another town council or anybody else an opportunity to rebut my comments. It's out of order. That's why that whole situation happened. Mr. Luteri, I hope you take those words up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything on Zoom? Uh, Karen?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, just a clarification. Vice President Belcher mentioned the meeting on July 12th, did you say?
Yes, it's a Friday.
And is it here?
Yes.
And that's gonna be, it's a stop discussion on Massport?
Yes, 'cause the other meeting, we just got so in-depth with MWRA, we didn't get to the Massport stuff, so.
Former President Gill.
Yeah, just on Peter Gill, precinct three, from 25th from around, did I follow a little bit?
She did. Thank you. I think he wrote that rule.
I would like to ask the council to consider, the town managers, to consider the location of Accurate Auto for the fire station. I know I mentioned that before, and I know you guys have talked about it before. I think the location is perfect. Accurate Auto is closed, I believe, the, the, the sale. Expert Auto, I'm sorry, Expert Auto, Connor Shirley and that was, um, I think it's a perfect location. I know that there's a concern with flooding and so forth and so on, but the building of the facility and the house next to it are all owned by the same person. I think the, the people, the point of concern about the being, you know, and maybe their concerns are justified, but it, I think is probably the closest geographic center to the town. I wish that the people would look at that. I think it would be a tremendous improvement for that location to have a public table. Thank you.
Thank you. Public relations on July 16th, Winter Planning Board will be meeting, um, again on the MBTA three A zoning with RKG, RKG Associates, and that will be at the senior center at six o'clock. Again, that's Tuesday, uh, July 16th. Winter Farmers Market, again, there was another one this past Sunday. They're incredibly run. It's, uh, they get better every year, and, um, the attendance is, is getting better and better. Um, it's tough around the holidays sometimes, but the attendance is really good. The vendors have been fantastic, and I thank them. And that is, again, the second and fourth Sunday of each month, and that will be through October. And again, once again, for the second time tonight, Harbals Parade, Fourth of July activities. I encourage everybody to be safe, enjoy, have fun, um, be cognizant of all the people that come down the point, and, uh, it's a great place to go, though, and, and enjoy the holidays. But again, the Harbals Parade is at 9:00 AM, starting from the landing, going down to Coughlin Park.[1776.83]